Good evening. Thank you for joining this edition of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners and Cemetery Commissioners Meeting. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance for flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to send our sympathies to the families of Cappy Bateman, Marsha Barron's, who both passed away. Cappy probably doesn't need a lot of description. He was built, uh, electrical inspector for many, many years. He and his family fixes up on the hill. His mother was the first, I don't know if she was female postmaster or postmaster when the post office was in their building. And also to our Marsha Barron's family, Marsha served a number of years on the Finance Board. Another fixture on the hill. She was Nichols College, a lawman employee for many, many years. So we take to send our sympathies on the passing.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next on the agenda, acceptance of minutes of 2-5-24 and 2-8-24 joint meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes for the 2-5-24 meeting.
Motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next, the 2-8-24 joint meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the minutes for the 2-8-24 joint meeting.
Motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next on the agenda, citizen comments. Is there any citizen here who would like to speak on something that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have the Town Administrator's report. Mr. Ruda.
Mr. Chairman, I have my, my budget recommendations for F, my draft budget recommendations for FY '25. We also have a draft revenue sheet. So, at the Board's pleasure, I'll start. You like me to start?
Wherever you're more comfortable, Mr. Ruda.
Okay. I guess we'll start with the draft budget for FY '25, my recommendations. A few things I want to point out. The Board of Selectmen asked me to keep my recommendations at or below 2.5%. We've done that with a few small previzos, which I'll explain. In the Treasurer's Budget, I don't know if Rich wants to get involved in this conversation, but there are six to eight line items that are generally difficult to adjust because they're actuals. They're actual bills. There's interest. There's maturing debt. And there's a, also includes the Webster Dispatch Assessment, which is voted by the Executive Board, and that's an actual bill. So... With that in mind, with those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 line items in mind, I've done a little exercise here so I can publicly explain what we did with the budget. So, on the current draft budget... Down here. If you look down at line 334 on your spreadsheets, there's also printed copies here for those who wanted to attend. It's also up on the screen being broadcast. I went through the exercise of bearing in mind that those 10 line items from the Treasurer's Budget are something that I can't really adjust without making further cuts elsewhere or adding stabilization. I level funded, and we've gone through the exercise of seeing with consideration to those budgets that I could provide a recommendation to and make cuts to. We've come up with a total, removing those 10 line items from the Treasurer's Budget, leaving the school assessment out and state assessments out. Again, those are a few bills that we don't necessarily have any control over. We've managed to come up with the increase of .73%, which is less than a 1% increase for those line items that we can control. That having been said, with a 2.5% placeholder in the school assessment, which was what the Board requested me to do, and leaving Rich's 10 line items as he projected and I agreed with, our total increase, let's see... Was at 4.03%. So I can go as far down in the weeds as you like, or if you have any questions, I'll stop there.
Does anyone have any questions? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Carmen Yanni?
I, I was up here, Mr. Chairman, to provide support. I've got a three-inch binder with some detail. I appreciate that this is the lead item. The idea that the Worcester Regional Retirement System is planning a 9.95% increase up until 2036, when the liability is funded. And our portion of that may be over or below what the system has adopted. So, like your Town Administrator said, we... That's our bill to pay. It's the cost of doing business. If you want to add in the health insurance, the original 10% increase, which was to be the vote of the Executive Committee and the Insurance Advisory Committee, was amended down to 8%. So there is some savings. Savings on an increase. That's, uh... You understand what I'm saying. The original plan was for a greater increase. And as far as the health insurance number, it's about as tight as it's going to get, given that we know what's going to happen, or between the Town Administrator and I, we anticipate positions to be filled.
Which would be, Mr. Chairman, more appropriate to address in October when we have actual numbers, when the retirements have taken place and we've hired and not rehired, or we're a quarter through the year, then we can make the appropriate adjustments at the October town meeting. So we've gone with what we know, basically, right now. The other issue, the other item in the Treasurer's Budget is the OPEC Trust, which I believe Rich projected that we're going to do our regular $10,000 contribution. I have a draft annual town meeting warrant where I put that out there to be voted upon at the town meeting just to help us get the bottom line more into control until we have more firm numbers. So, I'm still in favor of funding that, but I think we should do it by article at this point in time, as opposed to funding it now. We've also funded FAA reserve at 20,000, I think. I think that's stated now.
That's what Mr. Mayor requested.
It did. The only... The only hesitation with that is we could also do that by article at town meeting. If not in May, maybe in October, when we had a free cash number. So if we go to the overview, before I even go to the overview, is there anything I can answer for the time being?
Anyone?
So if we switch over to the overview sheet? Oh, let's, actually, let's go back. Just notice water in sewer. I don't think we've had an updated... Correct me if I'm wrong, George. I don't think we've had an updated since the last meeting request. So there were some errors with the water sewer enterprise account budgets. And what was submitted originally included what their requests were as opposed to what the actuals were for '24. So I had to make adjustments to that. And that still needs to be straightened out, which will probably, hopefully, happen by Thursday. The overview, so again, .73% increase on municipal budgets that Department Heads, the Board of Selectmen, and I have reasonably have control over, and the FAA as well. The overview sheet... What reminded me about the water sewer was that the indirects are still in the hands of that consultant that was hired to take a look at the current formula with the Treasurer's Office and with the Water Sewer Commission, just to give, put another set of eyes, an independent set of eyes on it, to see that everything was being calculated correctly. In the budget request from Water Sewer, they cut that in half like they did last year. That was their vote. That's obviously, it's not, definitely not going to be cut in half, I don't think. So I went with the original number that was submitted to me, which was 212-149. I think that's Rich's numbers as well. So all things adjusted. And including the use of free cash, which is 150-293. Currently, we have 150-293 in free cash. So I've included that into, into the budget. With the thought process being that we get a certified free cash by the October town meeting, and we would make any necessary deposits into stabilization at that time and use the free cash that was available now. We have an excess capacity of $58,256. Again, that's with the district at 2.5% though. The Bay Path number is the actual number. So, that meeting that we all went to on February 14th, I believe they said that we would have a number by the end of March for their assessment. So as it stands now, I believe their increase was about, at 2.5%, it was about $275,000. And that's, again, at 2.5%. We don't have the final number on that. And we currently have excess capacity of $58,256. Before I conclude that, we'll go on to revenue projections. Again, these are draft revenue projections. They're not completed yet. Last year, we were surprised by our excise motor vehicle tax revenue projection. In the OneDrive, you're going to see a few emails back and forth with some advice from Treasurer's Office on what to project for that number and some advice from DOR as to what to project until we have the chance to look at April billings, April commitments, as well as only, right now, I believe we only have the first commitment on the table. And between the two emails, there's the conservative approach, both from the Treasurer's Office and DOR, which is to reduce last year's amount or level fund it. For the purposes of revenue projecting, right now, I've level funded it to last year's amount before we can get a final, final number on that. I think Rich wants to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading and doing math. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, formulate your question, please. If there's, there's something that you need to complete. If not, I have... I have a report.
My questions, general. I can wait till the end. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we hit a high watermark, and it was scrutinized, the $1.7 million in excise. Your Town Administrator had noted that maybe we needed to have a more conservative number. Last year, year-to-date, 226-23, $1,248 was committed. As of today, I ran the report half an hour ago, $1,269 has been committed. So are we very similar to last year? Yes. I am not confident that there's an additional $400,000 that might be coming in the next commitment, or the second and the third commitment. If we take a second, this is our bill that's billed by calendar, not necessarily fiscal year. So, when the excise comes out, it's a 24 excise for the calendar year. The lion's share of it's going to be collected in the first, actually, probably, if the bills are mailed in February, so between March and June. And if you have a bill that's due on March 6th, the penalties and interest likely aren't going to start significantly piling up until maybe three or four weeks later. I think I'm going ahead of the order here. We've got the information, sort of, last year, complete year, year-to-date, and what's been committed. What's out there to be committed, what's out there to be collected, you'd expect similar collection levels. It's that you didn't have that second or third commitment that came through that would have said, yes, expect an additional 100, 200, 500,000, and the collection rate of whatever, 80, 85, 90, whatever the historical amount to collect within that year would be, would be listed. Again, this is one of those items that are referred to when we do our continuing disclosure. There's a metric they go through. Standard and Poor's will go through, collected in year of issuance, so on and so forth.
Anyone have any?
Does my explanation make sense? I'm sorry. Sometimes I get into the numbers and we start, we start going off.
Mr. Chairman, would you be comfortable reducing that? Would the Board be comfortable reducing that current projection to more like 1.6 or 1.4? That will have an impact on our bottom line. We'll go negative for the time being now. If we're not going to get it, we're not going to get it.
If you said it and I didn't grab it, I apologize. Did, did you have a number in mind, Rich, what it should be? Throw a dart at the dartboard.
I'm saying things are similar to last year. I don't have a guess on the second or third commitment, and I think that could be the big difference.
What are the pitfalls if we over? If we estimate too much, or if we don't estimate enough?
Excellent. We'll move two chess moves ahead. When we set the tax rate in October, all of your numbers need to be vetted by our DOR rep. So if it was a very conservative, for argument's sake, you only put down $1 million. And your rep will point out that you collected 1.7 the year before, and in this current year, for argument's sake, we collect 1.5. They want an accurate number, or you should be adjusting your taxes accordingly. They won't allow you to go through and put... Too big of an underestimate. You could put a solid placeholder, thinking that there hasn't been a mass exodus from the town of Dudley. You didn't have a major employer leave. If anything, there's probably a few hundred new faces since the last time we did this. So there would be more, there would be a car associated with each new resident. And get a modest placeholder in there. You also have time, if you have a May 20th town meeting, first, second week in May, you can get an update saying, this is what we have committed, and it's reasonable to think that 75% of it would be defendable at the town meeting floor, given you have an 80, 85% collection rate.
Knowing what you know now, would you be more comfortable with the same amount as last year? 5% less, 10% less? Three options. Which one do you think?
Can I give you the answer the first week in May? I, I, I think if you are pretty, pretty similar, I don't think it's a bad idea to go with your Town Administrator's estimate.
Mr. Johnson?
So, let me see if I can create a case for keeping it the same. To keep, for it to stay the same, assume that the values of the vehicles did not change that much. And if it did go down at all, potential new, new vehicles being added from new people moving in town could keep it closer to even or just a touch of. Is that a fair hypothesis?
Public transportation has not increased in the area, which would negate the need for automobiles.
Right. Maybe you don't see an increase worth, excuse me, past years because, you know, all those new cars didn't come in again this year. But, so I think, my opinion, it's even or just a touch less.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Ruda?
So, this is, up on the screen is an actual email. I just pulled one of them, from Kim Peliquin, who's our DOR rep, who helps certify our free cash every year in his revenue projections. And it's a similar suggestion as the Treasurer. And as Mr. Johnson just said, our advice is to be conservative with your estimates. If your estimates are higher than your FY '24 actual receipts, then you will be required to back up or justify, which we've been saying for years now, required to back up or justify why you believe you'll receive those estimates. If you're conservative and estimating equal to or lower than the prior year actuals, then it's likely won't raise any questions on your tax rate recap. Everybody's on the same page.
So we're fine just keeping it the same?
I think so.
There it is.
Thank you.
But as we do these estimates, there are different ways to do these estimates. In some cases, you can do it over the course of 12 months. Sometimes you have to do it by quarter, such is the case with taxation, with excise tax and so forth.
Always good to get multiple opinions before we set. Are you ready for questions on this, or did you have more to go over, Mr. Ruda?
The non-local receipts is also an email in the, in the folders, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure that the Board has had a chance to see those have been... For the non-local receipts, those have also been sent into the Lata Review as well. So... I'm, I'm all set unless you have specific questions of me.
I do. Cannabis host agreement, there's nothing there. We can assume that in light of legal things that we're not...
Cannabis host agreement, as we've discussed, that they've... DMA is no longer going to be providing those payments under the host community agreement due to changes in the law. And that's in the hands of Town Council, Town Council right now. And it's not just Dudley. It's a statewide issue, and it's in the court system. Dudley doesn't have any active litigation with it right now. We're going to see how things pan out.
I remember reading about Caroline's cannabis and Uxbridge suing them and getting a refund.
Well, we did not get anywhere near Caroline's cannabis in Oxford, Oxford in terms of...
Uxbridge.
In terms of what we collected. So there's not a huge, there's, there's, that's not an issue with us.
Next, the cannabis excise tax. That is not affected by that litigation.
Correct.
Let me see what else I have. What if now, this is based on the schools being at 2.5%. What happens if they don't come in at 2.5%? What happens if they come in at 5, or 8, or 7?
2.5% is $275,000-ish. If you look, and I know that the Board knows this, and I'm just doing this for the benefit of other people who are watching. Everything adjusted out on our overview sheet, that number, $58,256, is what we have left that we haven't assigned to anyone yet. That's, that's, that's the change we have right now. From the revenues we projected for next year, and we've plugged it into the budget with the, with the district at 2.5%. That's what we have left over, $58,256. So, to answer your question, if they came in, for example, at 5%, that would be twice 275. So we would have to go, we would have to dip into either stabilization, either stabilization account. You can see the current balance is $1 million, and, oh, basically, $1 million apiece. And we'd have to take it out of one of those two accounts. Or, we would have to cut lower than .73% increase that we assigned on the municipal side. Those are our two options.
Anyone have any questions?
And we need, Mr. Chairman, we seem to need to clear, we clarify this every year. When we say what the percentage increase is, we look at year over year. We don't look at what the district increase is. Because the district increase is about 1.9 million. And that doesn't translate to the same amount that Dudley increased year after year. Because there's, there's a split between Charlton and Dudley based on enrollment. And I, what I do is I consider what we paid last year, how much more are we paying this year? And we keep it as basic as that, to show what the actual increase is. And right now, we plugged in the number 2.5% because we don't know what the actual assessment number is right now.
Thank you. Anyone, anything? Anyone here? Mr. Carmen Yanni?
Mr. Chairman, there was discussion on the capital portion. Is that a good time to dis...
Capital portion?
Right. You have your district assessment, and then there's a capital portion. Portion of the capital for both Bay Path and Shepherd Hill, or Dudley-Charlton and Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational Technical School. Both of them have overlapping debt. The respective school districts approved, and we have a capital project, and the debt service is apportioned out. Those numbers appear in the assessment, but they are part of the DE1. They are raised as though they were a debt-excluded item issued by the town. Technically, it's called overlapping debt. So part of our tax rate includes a Bay Path component and a Dudley-Charlton component. The $7 million project coming up has a Dudley-Charlton component of the debt. The town may opt to exclude that from Proposition 2.5, which would increase your ability to pay for it because it would be part of your overall assessment of the school.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have that on a, I believe, not the, is it on the Thursday agenda? Or is it following?
My apologies if I'm...
No, no.
If I'm getting out of turn to use a...
It's, I think it's good, Mr. Chairman, to give a heads-up, it's coming. But, of course, in September '22, the town voted, the district voted, favorably on a question to appropriate $7 million district-wide for capital projects. You recall, it was the roofs, it was the fire alarm panel, it was communication devices, it was security cameras, and that sort of thing. What they didn't, what wasn't, was not decided at that time, it was voted, is the source of funding to pay for it. So we have the option to send it in, as Rich said, to a debt-exclusion vote. The Board of Selectmen has to vote on that to send it to the ballot. And then the people decide if they want to pay for it through a debt exclusion or if we're pulling it out of our, our budget.
Got it.
So that's coming up. That will be on an agenda in early March. March 4th.
Got it. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Anyone? No? Ready to move on?
We can, I'm ready to move on, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, public business. Dudley Little League.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant move on to the draft town... I'm sorry, I thought you meant move on to the draft town meeting warrant.
Okay, yeah, I was...
That'll be brief, I just want to show you what we're tracking right now. Again, this is a rough draft. Article three is always the final, the budget that we, the FAA and the Selectmen vote on to send to the town meeting to approve revolving funds. Some of the, part of the way that we were able to, to drill down on the budget is to move things that we normally would fund in a line item onto the warrant to make a determination whether the people wanted to support it or not when they vote for it. And to give us the opportunity to bring it back in October. If it doesn't, if it, if we didn't have the ability to do it in May, we could bring it back in October, for example. Article six is a placeholder for regulatory compliance to see if the town will vote to appropriate eighty-five thousand dollars from the capital improvement stabilization account for the purposes of performing Phase Two comprehensive site assessment in and around the site of the town's capital landfill. And it's that low, this doesn't seem like a low amount of money, but in comparison to three hundred thousand dollars that we still have yet to pay for, that we had to use this year towards it, that the town meeting approved. We're, we're turning the corner in, in, in beginning the process of hopefully getting a water line, a municipal water line down into that affected and impacted neighborhoods to provide clean water. So, there's going to be, there's going to be public meetings. We're going to notice all the residents to come in, talk to Jeff. And Jeff, I said Jeff twice on purpose, Jeff Blake and Jeff Faulkner. And our L S P from Weston and Sampson to have a full, full meeting and full understanding as to what the next steps would be to, to come up with a permanent solution to the drinking water problem in that area. So that's Article six. I mentioned the O P E D trust, that's Article seven, that's a placeholder. The annual increase for the treasurer and collector, treasurer, treasurer, collector, and town clerk are on there. I've taken the increase for the employee merit pool out of the line item and put it on as a warrant article. Damn inspections, the same thing. And then grant and project design, which is the money that we use, the seed money we use to pursue grants. There are some additional placeholders in here. And that's it. I just wanted to bring that up sooner rather than later, Mr. Chairman. It's still in very rough draft.
Anyone have any?
Such a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Maybe Mr. Ruda can answer or get the answer. Under the Articles twelve, excuse me, twelve to fourteen, the short-term mental bylaw, that's the one we gave the responsibility to the planning board that night.
Correct.
And the fourteen is St. Anthony's. I believe all the work has been completed over there.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So the thirteen, are they trying to get all of Pier Point Streets accepted while there's still construction going on?
I think they're trying to get the ones that are ready to go. There are some Pier Point, Pier Point Estates is, much of it is ready to go. But it may not make it onto the warrant, that's why it's, it's only on there in the draft form. It's more of a placeholder than anything else.
Okay, because, Mr. Chair, I think this came up before. I'm not sure if it was that subdivision. And obviously, I can speak to Bill or reach out to the planning board. When that comes up, I'd like to see that whole subdivision come for acceptance all at once. Because if we do partial acceptance, folks have been up there, they have the two little cul-de-sacs off to the left, and the road goes around. So just for example, say we're going to accept the two roads to the left. That means in a storm, people who live up above that are going to look down, see your town truck go up, turn in, turn around, and come out. And if we do partial acceptance of those roads, does that affect, or would they be putting up a greater bond if they drive construction vehicles over them and they get destroyed? And our interim superintendent has to go out there and look at a partially accepted subdivision with chewed-up roads. So I guess I'd like to know if they're looking for partial acceptance, which I would not be in favor of, I don't think. Or is it going to be completely done? Because, you know, Mr. Gasky can speak on it better than I can. But if you start running excavators and dump trucks and whatnots up there, it's not going to look too good.
Mr. Chairman, now that Mr. Sullivan brings it up, I think that Bill specifically mentioned that. That's why it may not be ready in time. But we'll double-check on that, we will definitely double-check on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Next on the agenda, public business, Dudley Little League. Dan Colella, President, permission to hold a toll booth on Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine a.m. to noon at the town line. And also permission to have the two thousand and twenty-four Dudley Little League Parade Day on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, with a rain date of Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Did you tell us who you are?
I am Danielle Colella, Secretary of Dudley Little League. We are actively preparing for our two thousand and twenty-four season and looking forward to our upcoming events. So I'm here to seek your approval for our toll road that we usually do. Like the chairman said, for Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine to noon. And for our Dudley Little League Parade, Saturday, May fourth, with a rain date of Saturday, May eleventh. And that again would like leave the town hall at noon time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to give permission to hold a toll booth on Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine a.m. to noon at the town line.
Second.
Or should I second, Mr. Sullivan?
Just one comment, we always ask Dan what he says. You've already met, I know you guys have done it many years.
Yes.
You already met with the two chiefs and how to set it up and...
We have not met about this upcoming one, but we would definitely do so. And...
Oh, can we just, Mr. Chair, we kind of make that conditional that Merrick sends an email saying everything's all set? Because if they have a meeting, we always have everybody meet to make sure the cones are, you know, I mean, just the general safety flow. I mean, I don't think, I don't think there's going to be a problem. But I don't want to set a precedent of proving something. And then if Merrick chief comes back in a month and says, whoa, we got a problem. I support it a hundred percent, but...
Or, or...
Yeah, just, as soon as we get the okay from the public safety, it's good to go.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good with my motion.
The way it sits?
Yeah. That's the second or wants me to adjust it.
If you're good with it, move forward.
Okay. Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Opposed, abstained.
I was going to ask, I didn't hear.
That's why, you didn't give me another option.
Opposed, abstained?
I'm going to abstain because I'm in favor of it, but I think we should have public safety just sign off on it.
Okay. So we have...
Two zero, three zero one. Hundred percent in favor of it, but...
No, I understand.
I don't want to set precedent.
I just, I just paused, I wanted, I don't know what I wanted, but I wanted it.
It's okay.
Next on the agenda, permission, I already said it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to have the two thousand and twenty-four Dudley Little League Parade Day on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, with a rain date of Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
I'll be in contact, Chief, with the details. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have amendment to regulatory and compliance revolving fund. Motion to amend the revenue source of the regulatory compliance account number oh-nine-one-five-oh-oh-oh-five-eight-nine-seven-nine-one-six-four to also include any fees, reimbursement, donation, cost sharing, or mitigation funds received for environmental testing, mitigation, or compliance expenses. And to amend the qualified expenditures to include any fees, reimbursement, cost sharing, or mitigation funds received for the environmental testing, mitigation, or compliance.
Mr. Chairman, do you remember a month ago that we did this? And it was to take a revolving account and allow us to take any cost-sharing reimbursements from Gentex and put it into that revolving account and spend it on the same mitigation, type of mitigation expenses?
Yes, Mr. Ruda?
Debbie didn't like the way we did it, so can we do it again?
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Johnson?
So moved. Motion is read.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, Chief Carlowitz, Central Mass Law Enforcement Council, SEMLEC Mutual Aid Agreement signed.
This is just the, an update to a mutual aid agreement that we currently have with SEMLEC. It's forty-two communities that participate in this. It's part of the regional SWAT team, drone program, K nine program, and accident reconstruction. And some of our officers this year are hopefully going to be participating in the program. The cost to our department is approximately, I believe, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it's well worth the money. So it's just an update to the agreement.
Got it. Any questions from the board?
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chair, to sign it, or just something the chief put forward, we just sign it?
I just need the Board of Selectmen to sign off on the agreement, if you want to take a look at it. But for the most part, nothing really changed, it was just an update because of the drone program that we added and a couple of issues that were added because of the Police Reform Act. Other than that, everything stayed the same.
So we did not need a motion? We don't need to...
No, just a signature. Because the old, the old act is still in, in play. I just, it's outdated, that's all.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, Board of Selectmen, Town Treasurer, Collector, Cash Reconciliation Update. Update from Treasurer Collector, Board of Selectmen on status of cash reconciliation from October two thousand and twenty-three to date. Request to review draft revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-five and provide feedback to T A and Board of Selectmen in advance of March fourth, twenty-four Board of Selectmen's meeting. Mr. Carminianni? Yeah, looks like, just wanted an update on cash reconciliations from October twenty-three to date. When do you anticipate those being?
My reconciliation to the bank and to the receivables that are in Vadar, I don't have an issue with. I think the tie-out with the town accountant, whose previous year was not completely in Vadar, I think might be the stepping stone. November is complete, it's a matter of sorting out December. And again, this is... I have a year of this. Your accountant has been doing this since maybe September. Specifically, the treasurer and collector receipts coming over in something other than a paper format. Remember, last year, we did the duplicate where they were tied out to Vadar and they were tied out to a spreadsheet.
So everything is in Vadar now, is that right?
Everything is in Vadar now, there shouldn't be a transaction outside of it. If anything, we're at the point where there is a unique transaction, it's been sort of memorialized. A good example would be, we have a department head, George receives a refund for five dollars for an overpayment on something. That's not something that a department head would put back into the budget. It's something that would be handled specifically by me, almost with the approval of the town accountant. So, there's, there's a process in place. The tie-out is painfully slow. However, it's to the penny. Everything is done, if anybody notices, there's a half a dozen bins. I have a tie-out to all of the bank statements. I still maintain a manual cash book. And we can tie it out to Vadar. I have the previous years as well. They are going back to May of two thousand and twenty-two. All of the receivables that were in point are now in Vadar. So moving forward, I need to be able to point to the commitments, the refunds, the abatements, and the payments. And we can do that. Aside of the fact, it is a busy period right now. As far as revenue projections, I think we covered a great deal of that previously. You want a defensible revenue projection.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, and I know I've asked you for estimates, projections, what have you, previous. When do you think this will be reasonably, like, I know January twenty-ninth, it's not going to be done March first. Or maybe, I don't know. But when do you, when do you think it will be as good as it gets as far as caught up, so to speak?
I, I have bundles, I've tied out bank statements up until February twenty-sixth. It's a matter of assembling everything and funneling them through. I have a double tie-out. I have one assistant going through the collector's side and another going through the treasurer's side. And I'm the person tying it to the bank account. So that, I, I, it's auditing two-on-one. That's how I've done it. And it's kind of difficult right now because it was a bee's nest this morning, and it was a bee's nest last Friday and last Tuesday. It's, it's a time for foot traffic. Things are being handled in the order that they've come up. I mean, obviously, we have to put things down. Needed to onboard your new librarian. So we're trying to cover everything, and I, I think I said this at the previous meeting. I'm not leaving here to go home. I'll be back downstairs for another hour or two to catch up on what didn't happen during the course of business today.
I'm just going to throw this out there. Would it, would it make sense to have like a temporary, someone who's like an account temp, Robert Half, somebody? Would it make sense to have somebody come in for three months and help?
Mr. Chairman, I was asking for that midsummer. And the idea that instead of me providing lunch coverage, someone else would be able to do that. The idea that would be able to close one door and one shade so that you'd have two teams being able to go through and do something and make up for the eight months that there were only two people in the office. That's, that's, that's my plan.
Forgive me, I don't remember, I don't remember that coming up. So, that would work, like a three-month temporary assignment, someone to come in just to get...
The plan was to have someone for these peak hours to be able to absorb. We had an illness, we had a person out for two days. That's sixteen hours' worth of catch-up time for someone else to do. It's, it's, it's not a grocery store, you know, the day before Thanksgiving. But it's, it's busy. it's busy.
Anyone have anything? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so I'm just, if I, I'm just reading it and I'm listening to Rich, and if, if we don't have cash reconciliation, I saw an email today that November came in with a slight discrepancy.
Mm-hmm.
That was addressed. And we're talking about revenue projections before you, Mr. Chairman. If we don't have cash reconciliation, and we're three months behind, how do we get good numbers going forward? Because is it similar to last year when we were hit with the three hundred thousand dollar excise tax number that nobody had an idea of until the private citizen had the information and came up and said, your numbers are off, I got this information today, and we, and we didn't have it?
I just wanted to get us caught up, that's all I wanted to do.
So do I, but I'm just, is it, and I guess we could ask the administrator, well, Rich, is it affecting our ability to get a solid number going forward on our side right now? I mean, we can guesstimate or estimate, and, you know, there was another email about an account last year that was eighteen thousand for the year, and now it's showing two seventy-three, and the question was, well, did that money flow somewhere else? It's another account. Because the question became underestimated, you know. So, I mean, I don't work with the accountant as much as other board members, I know Mr. Landry does. So those, those would be my questions, like, is he, is he not being reconciled, is that affecting our ability in today's snapshot of getting a good number?
I have, I have numbers here, back to my original explanation. I can tie to a commitment as to what's outstanding, what would be a credit to an account. I think it's making sure that the accountant is on that same page. If I can balance to the bills sent out, bills paid, and money in the bank, it, it's a matter of backing up and figuring out what is missing from the person who's providing the check and the balance.
So I guess I'm confused, and why we, why we, why does it seem like we're receiving information saying we don't have reconciliation number, so it's hard to generate a projection or a revenue number? Or Rich is saying, he held up a paper, he says, I have the numbers. So you're just telling me you have December, January, February, November, you have those cash reconciliation numbers, but nobody else does?
I have, I have them tied out to the bank, it's a matter of, I'm going to move over two hundred transactions in the month of December. It's a matter of summarizing them up. In addition to what you do in VEDAR, I make a summary sheet that lists out everything. I have the ledger-sized paper which lists out every deposit to every bank, all of those individual deposits as they are grouped together, sent over to VEDAR, all of the internal treasurer deposits that other departments bring in, post it, and put together. It's, it's a bit laborious, it's a bit time-consuming.
Mr., I think what, Mr. Chairman, that what Mr. Sullivan's asking about is the, the ability for us to annualize what we're receiving in order to try to make a projection for next year's revenue. And we, we, if we can get to one quarter, we've, our information is only as good as that first quarter. We send it to DOR, they generally want to take a look at more than one quarter. And so that's what I think the discussion is about, the ability to, to, to be able to annualize where it's appropriate. You know, I made the, the example, excise tax is probably not the best example for annualizing something, but there are other revenue sources that we need to annualize in order to see how we're doing this year and to try to project how we're doing next year in order to have accurate revenues to budget for next year. So I think that's the issue that Mr. Sullivan is bringing up. And we've tried to get assistance from DOR, and she's always sent back, you know, we, we need more, we need more information in two months, three months into the fiscal year in order to project. So that's, that's the obstacle we're trying to overcome right now.
Mr. Marcy?
So, Mr. Chairman, what's the answer? How do we get caught up to get that?
It's done on my time, is what it's done. Appreciate that people are thinking creatively, looking to add someone in, the idea that we were working from a deficit as far as the opportunity to train someone or just even answer a telephone.
And again, I'm, I'm just thinking outside of the box. I don't, I, I know what it's like to be behind in that sort of thing, and, and I, I don't know how much help someone just answering a telephone would do. I think someone who...
I would, I would, I would love to have someone come between twelve and one thirty when we're trying to shuffle for lunch. I, I agree. The idea that bringing a professional in or a better employee is a great idea. I thank you for bringing that out and bringing it forward. One of the things is, we're running out of, out of time and people to do things, and each day, a few hours is, it's, we're not making those gains.
I, I just think if we get up to a, a place of being caught up, then everything else will be easier, and then you're not spending an hour after a selectmen's meeting getting caught up or what have you. That, that's my thought, and I...
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's more than an hour. It was school vacation week, and it was another thing that I was forced to give up.
I, I, I know it's not on the agenda, but in the future, I would support some sort of a account temps, Robert Half kind of person for a quarter to come in, someone who can, someone who can work a calculator with a, with a receipt that comes out the end, someone who knows how to do this thing to get us to a place of being caught up, and Mr. Carminianni can train his new employee, and then there's less stress, less everything, and I think it's good for everybody, top to bottom. That's my thought. Anyone have any? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, Town Administrator, has there been any movement on the motion from two meetings ago and last meeting? I forget when it was, the additional help?
So, the authorization two meetings ago, was it two meetings ago or the last meeting? Something like that. Was one employee for, for the accounting office to be shared with the accounting office and the treasurer collector's office. The following week, there was some discussion about whether there was a conflict because one's supposed to be auditing the other, so we got a town council opinion on that, and I think, I sent that to Rich last...
Thursday.
Thursday, to kind of get, get an idea as to what he would propose in terms of eliminating that conflict based on what was provided by the, by town council. So just, all he really needs is just bullet points as to what the duties were involved so that we can actually post it and find the correct person to do the job.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, was there any movement after the email last week of what can we do going forward? Like, do we have a plan in place, framework of a plan? Do we have any kind of...
I don't have anything yet.
So, I'm just going to go back to, we had a discussion a couple meetings ago. If, if the, if there's any issue above and beyond treasurer collector's office getting caught up at a minimum, we need, we owe it to our accountant, even though she's probably retiring soon, she's still putting in her time above and beyond also to give her any help she may need. And I'm sure she wants her books, I'm sure we're going to hire someone too eventually, but we don't have an assistant over there, so she's been alone, period alone, longer than other people have been shorthanded. At a minimum, we owe it to her to see if that office needs more, which is my original objection to just giving help downstairs without taking upstairs into consideration. So I'm, I'm still going to have an objection to that because there's a bunch of email strings back and forth about, for example, the library, where's our state aid? It came in in January, does anyone even know where it is? You know, I guess, I didn't see a follow-up, but I talked to Mr. Landry before the meeting, I guess it did turn up, but, you know, library state aid, I don't know why the librarian was reaching out to the accountant saying, where's our money? You know, it's posted downstairs, that verifies it's posted, that doesn't do the actual deposit, unless I'm oversimplifying a financial process.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the outgoing department head likely put it in the wrong account and it was corrected. I think there's a bit of a disconnect when certain things are, are reported back.
That's true, that, I didn't see that memorialized anyway, I know, I know is that the answer I was given, so...
Hey, Mr. Marcy?
The bottom line is, we've got to get this right. You know, we promised transparency and openness with people who are paying attention this year very closely, so have, what, what, wherever there's new resource that has the right skillset that needs help, where we need help, we, we need to push that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
To get caught up.
Yeah.
Bottom line. Because, you know, we, we can't, we're blind, you know, when we're trying to make, you know, the priorities and figure out this, Jonathan needs, needs this, you know, DOR needs more information, just let's, let's just get caught up.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Landry?
Everybody's pointing out, obviously, the obvious.
Right.
And what Mr. Ruta spoke of earlier, I believe Mr. Sullivan touched on that, that we're waiting for a plan, we're waiting for information. So we can keep pointing out the obvious, but until we get that information, that plan, there's really nothing that can be done.
Belongs to the plan, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think we do. Do we? Is it the treasurer collector's office? Is it us? I don't know. I think it's a collaborative effort. And like I said, if we're looking, like you said, quick, you said, I, I'm paraphrasing what you said, quick speed now, that's how you get quick speed now. You call a, a service that specializes in that sort of talent, and we get someone in here, three months, whether it's, and, and I don't believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, but this person not being an employee per se, would, would, would they also be bound by what town council said about working in both offices? They would be, I imagine, so... I don't know, we, we've just got to get caught up, and I'm just, I'm, I'm racking my brain thinking of how.
So, so did I misunderstand Mr. Ruta's stating, we're still waiting for the bullet points of what the duties are going to be in each office so there's no conflict? Are we waiting for that so we can make a decision? I'll move as soon as I get there.
Okay.
Because that's what Mr. Sullivan, the original motion, kept arguing that night. What are the duties, what are the duties?
So what, what, what do you need then to get that going?
Well, I've, I've gotten the opinion from town council to make sure that we're not, we don't have a conflict because we have one employee working in a, in a, one, one office that collects and disperses and another office that audits, so there's, so we needed to get rid of that legal issue first. The, the opinion we got provided a roadmap, Rich has it, I need some bullets as to what we need to hire, what specifically will fit into what he needs to, to help in the office.
I'll get you in one minute. So you need bullets from...
I need bullets.
The treasurer collector and bullets from the account, correct?
If I, if I can get them from Rich, I can work with Debbie for the rest of it.
Okay.
Because we have a response with no bullet points from the town accountant, I think that was a Friday email, so...
Can, can you get Mr. Ruta bullet points of what you need in a person?
I just need to know what, what skillset I'm asking someone to come in.
Because that way, we, we don't want to run afoul of anything legal?
And know what we're going for, what we're hiring for.
Yeah, something that's going to help actually get caught up. I think a little more than answering phones and such, something, some sort of accountancy, competency.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's, just devil's advocate for one minute. Rich is asking for somebody to answer the phone, the board wants somebody to help get caught up. I'm the guy who has to execute that plan. Tell me what to do.
And he's the one that needs the numbers to get our financial plan moving.
Well, it's hard to give us, it's hard for us to give you a motion, we need...
We need to know what Rich needs specifically, I know what the board needs, and we'll move forward.
Okay. Can we get that from him tonight verbally, maybe?
Sure.
I think we have two different outlooks of what needs to be addressed. My plea has been, we need to have some time where I can sit down and devote a complete day to take care of, a month to reconcile is not thirty-eight hours' worth of work, however, getting up and taking care of somebody else's duty while they're at lunch. So my thought is, we need to be able to provide the basic admin service so that we have the intake, we can take care of whatever needs to be taken care of, not, I wouldn't ask somebody to go through and start apportioning costs between the water and the sewer department. I think that's my job. I think part of my job is to be able to instruct the two assistants that I have anytime I do something either monthly, quarterly, or annually. So the idea of being able to have someone on a Thursday for four hours, six hours, to be able to close the door and to be able to show someone else how to go through and, for argument's sake, reconcile a health insurance bill.
Wouldn't it make sense to have someone for a little bit that knows how to do that?
And then the person's gone in ninety days, and I have an assistant who looks at me and says, okay, how do we do this? My idea was to be able to hand off to either assistant. I need time to be able to do the work myself and to train the person to do it.
Yeah.
James is at the point right now where he's onboarding people, he is removing people from the health insurance, he's adding them to the life insurance, he's going through and doing the remittances. It is that hour or two hours out of the day that I make up at night because I've shown somebody how to do something, it's training. We had the, you, the assessments, we went through, and we had pages upon pages, what skillset does this person need to, to learn? Are they a grade three? Are they a grade four? What do you expect of them? There's a ninety-day review, six-month review, there's goals, there's objectives. The idea is, we can get someone to do some basics, and I'm not selling them short at all, so that I can do some training and it's going to take less of my time, and I can delegate and review.
Mr. Chairman?
I think it'd be easy...
That's where we want to be, though?
I think it, I think it'd be easier to train once you're caught up, though, just thinking.
Another option might be, and this, I'm just speaking as though we're not, we're just round tabling this, another option might be...
Yeah, that's what we're doing, we're trying to find a...
I'm asking Rich as well, maybe we, maybe Rich says, while we're trying to figure out who we're going to hire or what the skillset's going to be, what if we put it into the, the public traffic four hours a day on a specific day, or we, we open half a day, or we close down for the entire day, both gates down, both offices working to get caught up? And then we don't have to worry about training, answering phones, anything like that.
Taking a portion of that right now, I, I love the idea that Mr. Ruta's engaged in this, you know, Thursday afternoon, the gate was closed on one side so that someone could sit there and pile through what they needed to do, so...
I mean, that would be a short-term fix if the priority is, if the priority is to catch up. We can make that, and, and the problem with catching up is that somebody needs to answer the phone and answer the window. If Rich is in that office and somebody goes to the window and they want to see Rich, they're going to, it doesn't matter if... they're gonna, it doesn't matter if we have four part-time employees in there, they're gonna see Rich. If he's closed catching up, close it down and catch up. I'm, I'm, I'm offering this to Rich as well.
We, I, I have bills due in a week. It's, it's an excellent idea. I love the idea of, of a positive solution. Closing both offices for a specific period of time ahead of a bill is a backlash a little bit later.
It was one of them.
And we have, and we have. That's managing it.
I don't get too far with the line. I know Rich has his own office. He, he's responsible for managing it. The operations, the time, what gets done, what doesn't get done. So, I don't want to go too far, like the recommendations and suggestions, but we're still waiting for that information to be mailed back to the town administrator so we can move forward on our end.
All right. So, you're looking for the bullet points?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's already in motion.
Can we put a timeframe on that, Mr. Chairman, or?
Timeframe?
Do we, do you know when we could get those?
Bullet points in an email is a modest request, easily filled. Thank you.
Okay. There we go.
So, we could have that, I don't know, this week?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything, Mr. Johnson, you're good? Anything you want to add?
Departmental communications.
That's what's up next. While you're there, go ahead.
Goodness gracious. Bills are due on the 7th. You want to make sure if you're, if you're driving around in a vehicle, that, that, that bill is paid or you at least have it. Remember, they are all private. We're not gonna look up what kind of car the town administrator drives around in, that's all private. Looking to go the next step, it is a good thing to enroll in Unipay. Now is the time to go through and do such a thing. It's 50 cents per cart. So, when you pay your water, your sewer, everything else in a single cart, so only that 50 cent charge. Postage is over 60 cents. Sorry, Mr. Sullivan, it's a ever-increasing cost. Back, back to what I had mentioned previously, the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust had voted 8% for their increase, not the 10%. Right now, I don't have a return for the dental. It would need to be less than that. They've, they've only had a modest return. Same thing with Boston Mutual. Maya, our property and casualty, I would expect some in, increase in that you've had some worker, workers comp movement and you're insuring a few other items. Insurance-wise, then there is your new water plant that's ready to be completely insured. I will say with a smile, there have been multiple emails making sure that the insurance company has what they need to make sure that it's insurable. It's not a matter of a game of old maid with a two-mile-long punch list. It is reasonably finished and reviewed. The loss control person is going through and giving the thumbs up for that, so that is a good thing. In the, coming up, and I don't have the specific date, but there will be a health fair held at Bay Path. Bay Path, Charlton and Dudley Charlton purchased their health insurance from the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust. They've had a, not last year, but the year before, they had a health fair. We have received an invitation to go up there, so you'd have your, your people from the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust and whatever vendors we'd like to bring up. Boston Mutual, of course, is pretty universal. I couldn't speak to their AFLAC or any of their volunteer benefits, but that's something that's coming. Beyond that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
George, do you have anything?
Trying to be as brief. People down in the town, business or residential, is probably getting a survey card for the lead line inventory survey. This is a state mandated program. We do it through Ty &amp; Bond and they're the ones that really send it out. And the idea is, is to get an idea from the people on the water, who's a water user, has water pipes, what their pipe is coming into the home and also what we have for inventory is the pipe coming from the water main to the shut-off and then such as into the home. It's required that we get this information. It's a great head start to start inventorying all the houses and businesses in town so that we'll know if anything needs attention for, for lead, it'll point us in the right direction. I noticed a lot of people have been getting them and not in the water district. I don't know why, what somehow boo-boo must have been made. But if you're in the water, you have a water service and you get one of these, please fill it out and send it to our office. And any questions, there's a number on the card to call. It's not our office, it goes to Ty &amp; Bond. They're sponsoring the program. So, just to let you guys know what's, what's going on.
Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Thanks, George.
Mr. Gatski, do you have anything?
We currently had a private tree contractor working on the rail trail, clearing trees, getting it ready for paving. Because we got a grant for the rail trail, we're gonna be paving from West Dudley Road up to the Connecticut line and then from the Webster line up to the Connecticut line, we'll be paving that. That has to be completed by, I think, the end of June. So, we're gonna be working on that. On the 13th, we had a snowstorm, as everybody knows, nine inches or so. We have a bunch of new employees, trying to train them. Think we did pretty good for what we had to work with. We no longer be taking ashes at the recycling center. We're having an issue trying to get dispose of them. So, there will be no more ashes down at recycling center. And we also had a, somebody threw a radon filter away in the trash to recycling center. We got charged a thousand dollar charge for that because they had to go through the radon sensor three times. And they had to empty the trash out, go through the trash, find out what was wrong. So, we get, we're getting a thousand dollar charge for that. So, I put up signs down at recycling center, make people aware, no water filters in the trash. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Landry.
Great job on the 13th.
Yes, absolutely.
Roads were good.
Highest snow total in the state.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nice.
Bye, chief. Do you have anything?
Good evening. We received two grants, two more grants to EMPG, which we get every year. For $3,500, we bought a new thermal imager with it for one of our engines. We also received a firefighter safety equipment grant for $14,607. We bought some rescue equipment with that, some hydro fusions, which are like struts and come along, which helps us with rescue and extrication and things of that nature. Also, the, the new high has started today, the grant positions. It was their first day today, so they started training today. They're on for two weeks for training and then they'll be going to their respective groups.
Thank you.
Great, great job, Dean. Thanks.
Thanks, chief.
Police chief, and I see we've got something here about the highway superintendent screening committee as well. Update on job description.
Just gonna go over a little quick, last Saturday, not this weekend, the weekend before. Officer John Galak, he was patrolling the area on Schofield Ave. He conducted a property check of the storage facility up on Schofield Ave and he interrupted an active B and E in progress. At the time, as the officers were trying to path risk the two suspects, they struggled away. The officers pursued him, one of them ran into the, both of them ran to the opposite directions into the woods. We were able to get a K-9 from Webster and Webster offices to set up a perimeter. The K-9 officer, Suss, and his K-9 successfully tracked one of the suspects to a pine tree where the suspect was hiding 10, 15 feet up in the tree. He was taken in custody. The second suspect, we're still trying ID. Later on that day, the officers, our, our officers secured a search warrant for the vehicle that the suspects left behind. They located two stolen firearms in the vehicle along with some stolen items, narcotics. And the reason why I bring this up is it's great police work. In my 20-plus years of doing this, we've only interrupted an active B and E maybe a handful of times. We solved a lot of them, but not where proactive policing actually catches somebody in the act, so Officer Galak, you know, outstanding, outstanding job on his end. And also, the, the two guns that were covered, we're seeing a lot more of that. South Bridge, five miles away, they had four guns and four incidents in the last three weekends, so it seems like it's a common issue right now. Also, we did receive a $3,000 grant for, we sent Officer Robbie LaRue to a bridge academy a couple of months ago. The state sent us $3,000 to offset any costs. And last week, we had, we had a highway superintendent screening committee meeting where we, we met. We talked about the candidates that we received. Unfortunately, there was not, nobody qualified that met the the criteria. I believe Michelle posted that, a job on three different, on social media, on the beacon, on the website. It was posted for about a month and we, we didn't have any qualified candidates. So, what we did is we recommended that the board of selectmen appoint an acting superintendent and also to review the current job description. And we're gonna present that description to the board of selectmen when it's ready. But for the time being, just to make sure that the highway runs smoothly, we, we will be asking that the board appoint Mr. Gatski as the acting superintendent.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Is that something we need an agenda item on that we need to discuss?
I can, we can do it one of two ways. I can promote him to acting as the director of personnel without objection from the board, or we can make it an agenda item.
Make it an agenda item.
Okay.
Next two weeks.
Put it on the next one.
Yeah, two weeks.
And in the, in the meantime, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna pull that effective marks first. I'm gonna pull the job notice down and take another look at the the job description itself because it was modified over the past few years with Jeff stepping up to assume various roles. And we may have gotten a little ahead of ourselves in terms of what it pays versus those roles that he voluntarily assumed, so we'd like to re, take another look at that job description, take a look at the market in the area and bring it back to the selectmen after we've suggested some edits to it.
Thank you. Student representative? Board member comments, Mr. Sullivan?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm good.
Mr. Landry?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
Nothing new from you, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'll go then. Mr. Marcy had said a transparency. I wanted to share some insight. We had a meeting with Nichols College to discuss a possible pilot program. It's the second time they've postponed the meeting. Just disappointed about that, wanted to share that. Don't know what the next step is, but wanted to keep you all, keep you all updated on that because we can't have a pilot agreement if the other party isn't willing to step up and have a discussion. This could have been a phone call or an email. I guess we're just not a priority. Will the clerk please take us into executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion, convene into executive session under MGL Chapter 30, Section 21A, 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in public session. Bye, chief.
Second, motion and a second. Believe we need a roll call vote for this.
Mark Landry, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Steven Swell, aye.
Chris Johnson, aye.
Kerry Siganovich, aye. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.